This conference will now be recorded.
It'll be a short meeting, right? Good evening, everyone. It is 7:30. This is November 12th, the work session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us via video and teleconference. We ask that you please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight, and we will advise you of the appropriate times. We begin the agenda for the work session. Michelle, if you can please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the November 9, 2020 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News, and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and our website.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Can you please conduct your local?
Sure. Councilwoman Homan here. Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wosinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you, Michelle. So, public comment. This is the first of the three opportunities tonight for the public comment, for the public to be heard. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please state your name and address. For the record, you will have five minutes to speak. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard? Hi, Erica, is that you?
Hi, yes, it's me.
Great. Okay, please state your name and address for the record, and then you're free to speak.
Thank you. Erica Lewinberg, 100 Midwood Avenue. All right, so during the town hall, I read a statement, and several people have asked me to read it during a mayor and council meeting. This statement had been written by a group of Vision Committee members in response to the Thursday, October 22 land use meeting. The Vision Committee was referenced several times by the architect, Mike Scrow, from Z Plus, as having been part of creating the current plan for a new borough hall. And in an effort for full transparency, we would like you to know that the Vision Committee's role in this plan was extremely limited. The previous mayors Barra and White, and the current mayor Bernstein crafted the plan and presented it during Vision Committee meetings. Their plans were changed over time without the Vision Committee input. This committee was formed without public notice for community members to participate. To date, there have been no meeting minutes or attendances provided. We met no more than 10 times in three years. In the last 18 months, from May 2019 until October 14, 2020, the Vision Committee did not meet. The group was not privy to bidders on the property, although we were told that we would be allowed to review all bids. Later, we were informed that this was confidential information. The committee members have never met with Hampshire, who is purchasing the property, and for 18 months between 2019 and 2020, the Vision Committee did not meet. The Vision Committee members did focus on visiting senior centers in Montel, Ramsey, Mawa, and Midland Park. A survey was created to assess Allendale's needs. The survey was circulated predominantly within the XYZ Club and residents of Seaback Court. The survey addressed the concern about a senior center located on the second floor. All senior centers recommended having the senior, the center on the ground floor for safety and easy access. This is no longer an issue as there are insufficient funds for a courtroom and second floor on the right side of the new Borough Hall. The loss of the senior center in a new building is illustrated in the architect's failure to subdivide the space for multipurpose usage and storage areas. Also, in his presentation, he stated that wheelchairs were not likely to be part of the center, which illustrates the lack of understanding regarding the needs of some people in this population. The layout is not conducive for differently-abled people, daily programs, socializing, and recreational activities for seniors. In summary, the original plan has been aborted, and we no longer have a viable senior center. The Vision Committee did not have input in the current plan for redevelopment. If the community would like information about the research regarding senior centers and our Vision Committee notes, please contact Kristin Zarnas at ktszarnas@yahoo.com.
So Erica, who do you represent from the Vision Committee on that letter, please?
So, some people would not like their names shared.
Well, please, I think it's, I think if you're going to have a statement like that with a lot of falsities, you need to let us know who you're representing.
Excuse me, what did you say with a lot of what?
There's a lot of things in there that are not accurate, Erica. It was never the intention of the Vision Committee to be part of a design. The Vision Committee was a community-based group that were going to talk about some of the needs of the community. Now, listen, you decided to take the whole senior center part and run with it, and that was just never the intent. We never said we were building a senior center. In fact, we were very, very clear that we're not building a senior center. We are building a Borough Hall, and we are building something with the needs of the entire community. So, I don't know what, where you thought you were going to be involved with the negotiations with Hampshire. None of that was ever on the table. This process has taken years. I'm sorry, it was between a couple of administrations, and there's probably been some communication that was lost along the way. We were dealing with a contamination issue, and we were dealing with COVID, and that's the result of the gap in us not meeting. But we took some of the, some of the suggestions, the senior center was going to be on the first floor, that was your number one goal. We managed to be able to work that out, but there was budget constraints, and there's a lot of other things that we can't have the Vision Committee be part of. We are the governing body, and that is our job to represent the whole entire community and take what's best for the community. You wanted to pigeonhole a senior center, and that is not, was not accurate, and that was never the intent. So, I think if you're going to publicly have this long message displaying all of these, this information, I think at least you owe it to us to let us know who is on that letter and who you're representing.
I would like you pleased to share with me what the misinformation is that I have just read.
So, Amy, hold on one second. It's a good dialogue, and it's a healthy dialogue, and I don't want to shut, I don't want to quiet anyone, but it's just not appropriate for this part of the meeting. It's, it's the time for the public to speak. They can say five, they can speak for five minutes, and then we move on. So, I respectfully, with the utmost of respect to everyone, to Erica, to Councilwoman Wosinski, and to whatever other dialogue would, would take place, I'm going to move on. So, my apologies to anyone who's taken offense to that, but it's my job to run the meeting, and that's not the purpose. That dialogue does not fit into our agenda, nor is it the purpose of public comment. So, with that said, anyone else wish to be heard at this stage for public comment? Not seeing anyone. Okay, next, next part of the agenda is a presentation for Best Practices Inventory Checklist by our CFO, Alyssa Mayer. Each year, the state of New Jersey requires municipalities to answer a series of questions known as the Best Practices Checklist, which evaluate municipal operations and encourage critical thinking about management and planning. The amount of state aid that municipalities receive is directly tied to the score on this checklist. I want to thank Alyssa Mayer for spearheading this task and for working with our departments head-on to once again achieve a score that gets us the Borough 100% funding. This requires a good deal of time to prepare. We truly appreciate your attention to this. Alyssa, we, HR Administration Finance Committee went over, we participated, as did all of the department heads. So, with that as a setup, Alyssa, it's all yours if you want to walk us through it.
Okay. You kind of stole half of my thunder.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, though. So, this year, inventory, a total of six questions. Some were new, and some are repeat questions. 29 of the questions were scored, while 31 questions were unscored. The unscored questions are for the DCA to solicit information on a variety of topics. Some of those topics were related to COVID and how the municipalities were coping with it. Many of the questions were on land development issues and primarily geared towards larger towns and cities. We answered yes to 24 of the 29 questions. Four of them did not apply to us, generally because of our size, and one was a no. So, we will be getting our full portion of the aid from the state, and I'm very happy to report that there are really no areas that need to be addressed, as we are very compliant with the standard best practices recommended by the DCA. And all of the council members, I believe, have a copy of the inventory. So, if anybody has any questions on any specific areas?
Okay. Any council members have any questions? I know Amy, Matt, and I worked, we looked this over several times with you, Michelle, and Ron. Any other council members have any questions about any, any of the responses on the Best Practices Inventory?
No, thanks. We resent it.
Okay, great.
Thanks for your work on that, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Okay. Administration, we're going to move on to the administration part of the work session. We'll start with the agenda review. We have a full agenda tonight. The minutes of the October 8, 2020 work and regular sessions are all listed for approval. Everyone was in attendance and is eligible to vote. We will have second reading and public hearing on 20-17, having to do with short-term rentals. And so, we discussed it two weeks ago. Councilman Sasso, I don't know if you want to say anything further on that, but I want to give you the opportunity to speak on this if you'd like.
Well, I think if you got opportunity, but I think, I think we're good.
Okay, great.
On this one, I, there's been a lot of stuff in the news lately that would, I think, support our position, especially in the COVID world, that this makes a lot of sense for the health, safety, and quality of life issues for everybody in Allendale.
Okay. Introduction of ordinances, 20-18, ordinance amending and supplementing Article 2, Chapter 26 dash 25 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale. This ordinance establishes the eligibility requirements and promotional process for officers to the ranks of chief, captain, lieutenant, and sergeant of the Allendale Police Department. Ray, would you like to comment or speak to this?
Yeah, briefly, Mayor, as you indicated, this promotional ordinance attempts to objectify the promotional criteria for the positions that you just mentioned. Obviously, the area of litigation in promotional matters involving police departments has become very, very topical, in part because many municipalities used a subjective promotional process. The intent here, as has been the case more and more, is to objectify the criteria at each position in terms of establishing length of service, length and rank, and the other performance criteria geared to promotion. So, before there is any vacancies or consideration of promotion moving forward, it is best for the municipality from its own vantage point to have an objective ordinance in place, and that is the purpose of this ordinance.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions on that? Moving to the consent agenda, we have 12 resolutions listed for approval tonight. The bill list has been reviewed, I reviewed it, Matt and Amy. Did you get a chance to look at it?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. 20-245, to cancel various reserves, Water Utility Operating Fund, our CFO has identified certain reserves that are no longer necessary, and this resolution authorizes their cancellation. 20-246, authorize final payment and release of retainage, drainage and sidewalk improvements, the Woods Frank and Turnpike Project on Q Technologies. Our Borough Engineer is satisfied with the work completed by On-Q Technologies on the drainage and sidewalk improvements for the woods at Frank and Turnpike Project and is recommending the authorization of final payment and release of the retainage. Next on the agenda, 20-247, the Shared Service Agreement for Snow Plowing and Salting Program with the County of Bergen. The Borough will be continuing its shared service agreement with Bergen County to reimburse us for plowing and salting of their, of their roadways during inclement weather. Next, the next two should be read together. 20-248 and 249, authorize deferred compensation program for Nationwide Retirement Solutions and AIG Valick Retirement Services Agreement. These resolutions authorize our CFO to sign updated agreements with Nationwide and AIG Valick as part of our deferred compensation program. The next is 20-250, appoint Board of Health Secretary John Gill. John will be assuming the title of Board of Health Secretary. John, we thank you. You're a great fit there, and we're appreciative of your willingness to serve. Thank you very much. 20-251, authorize the withdrawal of Board of Health Funds. So, this resolution gives us the authorization necessary to get John set up on the Board of Health bank account. Right, so thank you for that. 20-252 is the Municipal Services Agreement, the Shared Services Agreement with the Borough of Ho-Hocus. This resolution continues our Municipal Court Shared Service with Ho-Hocus for 2021. Next, 20-253, authorize budget transfers. Budget transfers are allowed in the last two months of the year, and this resolution authorizes transfers to account, transfers to accounts that need additional funds, which we can do in the last two months of the year. Anything you need to add to that, Alyssa? No, okay. 20-254 and 20-255, these two resolutions authorize the purchase and installation of equipment and materials for our new playground. Thank you to Amy and Ron for all your hard work and planning for this. It's going to be a great place for Amy, for Allendale's children to enjoy. And Amy, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, no, actually, Councilwoman Homan also helped. Her and I were, you know, flying through the playground catalogs, and we finally were like, you know what, our kids are old. Let's bring in some of the young moms. So, we actually brought in two young moms, and they were great, and they surveyed their kids, and we came up with, we thought it's kind of like a modern, but we're going to keep it with the natural colors to go with Crestwood Lake. So, they're very pumped, and I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to our lake, and it's going to go well with our existing kind of newer playground equipment that's there now. There's the older stuff is going to be taken out, which was the old fire engine and the kind of old police car and some of the old little swings that were broken. So, it's going to be beautiful. We are also going to have a fence, so the area right there is going to be just completely look, have a different look, and then we're going to try to incorporate it in with our new band shell. So, that's going to be hopefully happening by next spring.
Great. Liz, anything you want to add to that?
No, it's been fun, and, and, yeah, everybody was great helping out.
Good. Okay. So, that's the end of the agenda review. We do have some time for committee reports. So, Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Calls into the police department was 13,550. 911 calls was 1,364. EMS was 341, and fire was 143. And we have two officers out. One is a COVID positive, and one's under quarantine. With that being said, OEM met virtually. Just a quick refresher on wear your masks, COVID cases are up, follow CDC guidelines, and we will be starting to meet with OEM a little more often. We have a meeting for OEM next week and public safety next week. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. Council, thank you for your report. Councilman Sasso, would you like to give your report?
Thank you, Ari. The Land Use Committee has not had a full-blown meeting since our last council meeting. However, we have had a number of ad hoc meetings and conference calls to, and emails to deal with some time-sensitive things, which we took care of, and some of them are ongoing. We have a meeting scheduled for the 20th of this month at 7:45, although I'm going to have to adjust that time because of my paying job. So, during the weekend, I'll reach out to the committee and either just the time for that day or another day. And that's all I have right now, and I'm very happy about the second reading tonight on the, the short-term ordinance. I think it's very, very important, again, for our quality of life and safety here.
And I agree, and I commended you for the hard work that, when we introduced it. Yeah, I know this took a lot of tweaking, and you were certainly at the helm with that, so thank you for that. Councilwoman Homan, would you like to give your report?
Sure. So, hi, everybody. First of all, people hopefully are aware that Murphy did sign into law a ban on single-use plastic bags and, and single-use paper bags, actually, as well as, as other things. This ban will officially go into effect on May of 2022. So, I'm hopeful that Allendale residents will begin to make this transition a little bit more immediately, and most people have started bringing in reusable bags to the stores, but hopefully this will just be more of an incentive to do so. But because the statewide legislation has been officially signed into law, I am not looking to pursue implementing the original plastic bag ban that we had been presenting on the Borough Council here. But I certainly do want to thank everybody, the, you know, the store owners alike. Everybody had a lot of positive support for it, as Amy and I talked to store owners and residents and the Chamber of Commerce alike. So, I thank them for that support, but we will, I believe, unless somebody has an objection to it, we'll wait for the state legislation to go into effect. Saturday, yep, any comment? Okay. Saturday morning, I'll be attending the Northwest Bergen Virtual Mayor's Meeting. Thank you, Mayor Bernstein, for facilitating my opportunity to be present at this mayor's meeting. And, you know, we're encouraging, I had emailed out to all the mayors and asked them to be on, to have a focus on drinking water, and to bring any municipal personnel that they felt would be valuable to be involved, and to share with everybody on the council and anybody in the community that's interested. The sort of objectives that I have are really to share some of the background learnings that the Water Committee has had here in Allendale, and as well as trying to see if we can generate some interest in possibly an elected, an elected group of officials to actually meet with NJDEP sometime in the future, because when Steve, Ari, and myself had met with NJDEP previously, they seem really receptive to understanding some of the challenges that we as smaller water, water operators that we have that are different than some of the bigger, you know, American Water, SUEZ and those. So, it'd be great to be able to have a group of elected officials be able to talk to the NJDEP in the future, as well as I'm very interested in establishing a Northwest Bergen Drinking Water Working Group that may be, you know, people like myself and Lane and Ron with little time that he might have, but to be able to better just exchange ideas and look at things from a Northwest Bergen County group of municipalities that do still own their own water infrastructure, and many of them actually do have their own water departments. So, that'll be this Saturday morning. So, hopefully that will go well. And then, just as updates, the Fairhaven 1 million gallon tank was taken offline and cleaned, and it's now back online. And Ron and Lane, thank you so much for working with SUEZ to have one of the pumps reprogrammed, and it will now begin to work more efficiently for us in taking water in and out of the Fairhaven tank. And also, the hydrant flushing is going to be continuing, and thank you, John Gill and Ron, for, you know, working to get communication out to residents so they are alerted as to the different zones of hydrant flushing, which we need to finish before the end of the year. As many of you know, that storm in July, obviously, you know, caused a lot of taxing on costs with our water systems having to be run manually, and there's been a lot of other costs, you know, pipes breaking, things like that, that just are money that needs to be put into the system for upkeep. So, we will be looking at how the water rates and potentially service charges need to change for next year. So, that's never easy to talk about raising rates, but I think it's important to understand that water is such a valuable resource, and we do need to spend money to continue to preserve our infrastructure as well as to invest in future upgrades. And then, lastly, I want to make sure I invite everybody to attend the second virtual water meeting that we'll be having on December 9, and that is actually going to be a talk on emerging contaminants and the cost of water. So, I really encourage everybody, I know it'll be in our November newsletter, so I'm hopeful that everybody can attend and will attend, and I look forward to it. That's it. Thanks.
Great. Thanks so much, Liz, and thank you for all, you're the phenomenal job that you've been doing with water. I know, I'm looking forward to the presentation on Saturday, and I know a lot of the other mayors have indicated or voiced their, their eagerness to participate and bring other people from their borough. So, thank you for spearheading that.
Thanks. Well, and I also should add, just again, I feel like I cannot thank Amy enough for all the work she does with our 220-230 project. I mean, it is a labor of love and a constant daily communication. So, just, you know, I'm on the team. Amy really drives a lot of our agendas and suchlike. So, just thank you, Amy, for not getting tired and continuing to keep us moving forward.
Great. Thank you for that, which is a good segue. So, Amy, it's 7:57. I'm not going to cut you off. You want to start and then finish afterwards. If you want to just wait till the end, we can, it's up to you whether you want to start.
I mean, I can start. I'm not sure I'll get it all done, but I'll try to talk fast.
Go ahead.
So, the Borough had a busy month with 220-230. We had the Vision Committee on the 14th. We had the Land Use Board meeting on the 21st, and then we had a virtual town hall on the 29th. The virtual town hall was very well attended. Thanks for everybody who joined us. Just want to remind everybody that the, first and foremost, we, we really need this property to build our state-manded affordable housing, the court mandates that these units be built, and without this property being built, we are in violation of the court settlement, and then we will lose our housing certificate and be vulnerable to builders' lawsuits. So, this is a fact. There was some false information on 07401, so I just wanted to clear that up, that we absolutely will be building our low and moderate income housing in this property. Second, we, another just reminder, we bought this property to preserve the character of Allendale. As was reported and has been in the paper, every local town near us are building hundreds to thousands of units, and this property was a hot property, and we would have been dealing with the exact same number of units regardless of the size. They make you build them anyway. So, it's very fortunate that the Borough does own this property and that we could build it the way that we want to build it, with the developer who we actually chose on our own, went out to bid with, and he is a well-known, they are a well-known developer, and I think they've actually been very fair throughout this entire process. So, we are, as always, our goal is to be as transparent as possible during this process. So, we just really encourage everybody to email us, and please don't go to social media again for information. Please come to us and get Liz and I, and we'll answer your questions literally within a day or probably within an hour. So, we continue to work through all the legal documents with our experts. We are continuing to finish up the remediation. We're continuing to work with our insurance carrier as well as the DEP to further explore some grants. So, our streetscape project is coming along great. We are right on schedule, and it looks beautiful. I think we are lucky to have, again, great, great builders or developers. They're very cognizant of our construction, especially at the A, B, and G right there. So, they're wanting to make sure that their timing is white and right, and they're keeping all the merchants in mind. So, really happy the way it's all coming out. I go there almost daily, and the project manager is great, and if there's something that goes wrong, he texts me right away. So, it's great communication. And I know it's 8 o'clock, so I will finish when we're done.
Great. So, you're finished, or you want me to come back?
No, I just have, I just have a couple more things.
Okay, we'll come back to you at the end of the regular session. So, now, 8 o'clock, I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Liz. Second?
Second.
Second, Steve. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, that concludes the work session. Don't go anywhere. It's now 8 o'clock. It's now 8 o'clock, and this is the November 12, 2020 Regular Session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us via video and teleconference. This time, I'd ask the public to please mute your devices so as to not distract from the business of the meeting. There will be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak. We will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, can you please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement?
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the November 9, 2020 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great. Thank you very much. All, please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilwoman Sasso?
Here.
Councilwoman Strouch?
Here.
And Councilwoman Wozinski?
Here.
Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes. I would request a motion to approve the minutes, the October 8, 2020 Work and Regular Session minutes.
So moved, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Strouch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Next is a public comment on agenda items only. So anyone from the public wishing to be heard, wishes to be heard on agenda items only. Not seeing anyone, I'll close it to the public. Ordinance for second reading and public hearing, ordinance 20-17. Ordinance amending, supplementing, and revising Capitol, Chapter, was that 181-1?
Yes.
Of the Code of the Borough of Allendale. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance. After the title is read, open the floor to the public for comment.
Sure. The following ordinance published herewith was first read by title only on October 8, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. It's ordinance 20-17 and ordinance amending, supplementing, and revising Chapter 181-1 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale.
Great. Thank you. I would open the floor for any public comment on ordinance 20-17. Not seeing anyone, I'd ask that a council member move to pass and adopt on second and final reading ordinance 20-17, and that notice of same shall be published according to law.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
So 181-1 is our under 30 day ordinance, right? I'm looking at the same one, the right one?
Yes.
Okay. So on behalf of the Land Use Committee and the Land Use Board, this ordinance had to go to the Land Use Board for review, assistancy review with the master plan. They agreed it was consistent, and through their council, they sent a communication back to the mayor and council that it was consistent and they were in agreement. So on behalf of the Land Use Committee and the Land Use Board, I'd like to offer this.
Great. Thank you very much. Second?
Second, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sasso?
Oh, yes.
Councilwoman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Great. Next is introduction of ordinances, ordinance, ordinance 20-18. An ordinance amending and supplementing Article 2, Chapter 26-25 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale. I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce pass on first reading ordinance 20-18 and to set the hearing for December 3, 2020, 8 p.m. or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved, O'Connell.
Thank you. Second?
O'Toole.
Thank you. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and thereafter conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is ordinance 20-18 and ordinance amending and supplementing Article 2, Chapter 26-25 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale. Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Great. Next is the consent agenda, which I went through during the work session. I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second, O'Toole.
Great. So Amy and Matt. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Great. We'll continue with the continuation of our committee reports. Amy, would you like to continue?
Sure. Actually, I was almost finished. I was talking about the streetscape, I believe. So the lights are due in February, and they will be installed then, probably throughout the winter. And I just wanted to remind everybody that we will actually be replacing all of the trees. So there actually will be more trees going in there than there were before. The trees that were there were currently way too large for the space. It was over 20, I think it was 20 years ago when we put them in. And street trees are really only meant to last around 15, 10 to 15. And we're doing all this with a grant. It's a $662,000 grant for the three phases. The grant is only earmarked for streetscape. It could not be used for anything else. And another grant was put in in 2020 for another $250,000, which will hopefully finish up at least the main street area. And then from there, we'll see if we need to put in additional grants. Our November newsletter went out today. It has a ton of great information in it. It actually looks really good. So make sure you go and read up. And if you're not on constant contact, I encourage you to please sign up for constant contact and tell all your friends and tell all your neighbors, because it does have a lot of great information in there. So that's my report. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman O'Toole?
Yes, sir. Administration Finance and HR Committee has not had an official meeting since our last council meeting. However, there's never a shortage of things going on. In addition to keeping an eye on all the bills, we are winding down negotiations with the white collar union and opening up negotiations. We've started with the PBA. That being said, it's also time to look ahead to next year's budget. The worksheets have gone out to all the department heads to start working on the numbers for next year and ask to sharpen up their pencils, because as difficult as budgets usually are, this year is even more challenging. So we got a long road ahead.
That we do. Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Strouch, would you like to give your report?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Bernstein. Before I start my DPW report, I'd like to speak as a resident and thank all of you on the council for your dozens of hours that you spend every week. I just want to make sure that if I haven't said it repeatedly, I appreciate it. And the more I see what you guys are doing, the more I appreciate that this is a high functioning council. It's built upon the shoulders of previous mayors and councils, and it's a pleasure to be part of this team. As many of you know, I'm a window and door repairman. So I'm spending more time in my house these days than out in the field. And it's given me a chance to see how Allendale functions on a daily basis that I didn't get to see before. And I'm proud of the DPW workers, everything they've done for both routine stuff, like picking up our leaves, or the emergency stuff, clearing limbs during storms and helping the police and fire when needed. I can't thank them enough as a group. I do want to shout out to Danny Davis and John Pasquino, who, like me, are kind of Allendale born and bred. And I think we're lucky to have people like them working for the town and the DPW department. And, you know, this year, they did an excellent job maintaining the fields. And I just want to give a shout out to them. And let them know that I appreciate it, and I'm sure that all of Allendale does. The seasons are coming to an end this week, but the leaf pickup program is still functioning. This week, it's the east side of the train tracks, which is basically Franklin Turnpike and East Allendale Ave. Next week, it'll be back to the west side of the tracks. So if you live anywhere near Brookside School, Hillside School, Northern Highlands, you're on the west side of town, and next week will be your leaf pickup. It seems to be a very popular program with a lot of residents using it, and I'm glad we can offer that service. Next week, we're going to be having the streets swept again. This will be the second half of our October sweeping. And in addition to all the other stuff that the DPW has been doing, I mentioned in my last couple of reports, soon they'll be adding a new borough street sweeper to their list. This is a long-term purchase that we've been working on for a while. And so in 2021, we'll have better control of our street sweeping, because we'll have our own machine. So I'll end my report there, Mayor Bernstein, and thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Jim. Thank you for, and you spoke as if you, you spoke as a resident, but you spoke as if you are not integral and essential in doing all of the heavy lifting as well.
For decades.
Right. That's right. So and the, what, the experience and the work, I mean, we just, we would be here till 11 o'clock if we tried to go over what your accomplishments and contributions to the borough. So I wanted that to be said, and thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
I will, my mayor's report, I will try to keep it brief. There, with the rise in the reported COVID-19 positive cases around the county, the state, and the country, I want to remind everyone to remain vigilant with their mask wearing, social distancing, hand washing, and other precautionary practices to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. If your child, if you or your child has COVID-19 symptoms and are waiting for test results, please keep your children home and away from the school. Don't send your child to school or let them play sports if they have symptoms or waiting for test results. Only if the test is negative is when they should be safely engaging with other kids. It may seem like common sense, but it bears repeating. We're on the honor system, and we're just hoping that everyone will do the right thing with respect to that. While Allendale continues to be on the lower end with 168 total presumptive positive cases through November 10, we must not let our guards down as we head into the winter months. The Board of Health has put together a comprehensive report and information on ways to protect yourself from COVID-19 as well as the available mental health resources from our November newsletter, I think that Amy spoke about, that was sent out today. Thank you to Board President Nadine Benoit and all of the board members for this important, helpful information. For the upcoming Bergen County COVID-19 testing dates and locations, please go to www.bergencovidtesting.com for up-to-date information on the coronavirus. And you can also visit the state's website, covid19 nj.gov. Councilman O'Connell mentioned that we began meeting, the OEM group committee began meeting. We met this Tuesday. We discussed a myriad of things, the PPE to make sure that all of our first responders have sufficient amounts of PPE, procedure and protocol for the next few months, and steps to maximize the safe health, the health and welfare of our residents and our employees. And we intend to meet weekly as we did in the past. This past election was definitely different than what we are accustomed to in the past. I want to thank all the residents for their patience and cooperation in making the process here in Allendale a smooth one. Congratulations to all the candidates, and especially to Councilwoman Amy Wozinski and Councilman Ed O'Connell on their reelection to the Allendale Council. Thank you very much to the two of you for your willingness to serve. They will be sworn in for another term at the mayor and council's reorganization meeting in January. The general election results can be found at www.bergencountyclerk.org. This Saturday, or no, this past Tuesday, I attended the Bergen County League of Municipalities Mayor's Meeting, where we discussed things, some legislation that they are looking to pass and how it will affect us and what steps we can take to deal with it. I will bring that as things move through the legislature. I will bring it to everyone's attention. On a congratulatory note, Joanne Minichetti, who is the mayor of Upper Saddle River, was voted in as the president for 2021. I want to thank her for her willingness to serve. She will be great there, and I wish her much success in that post. Our administrative offices will be closed on November 26 and 27 for the holiday. And with that said, on behalf of the borough, I'd like to wish you and your families a safe, healthy, and enjoyable Thanksgiving. That's the end of my mayor's report. We will now go to committee staff reports. Right?
Very, very briefly, Mayor, in addition to the items reflected on this evening's agenda, I've been working with Mr. Kissner on various personnel and property maintenance issues. And I think as was reflected in council committee reports, we do have ongoing negotiations with our two bargaining units. And as is always the case, busy two weeks on 22230.
Right. That's it, Mayor. Thank you very much. Michelle?
I just wanted to, you know, as you spoke about the election before, I just really wanted to thank Tatiana Markey, John Gill, Linda Garofalo, Ron Kissner, Dan Richards, Rich McDowell, Chief Sherb, and Detective Rizzo. It was, we didn't know what to expect, but it went very smoothly. And just the county has let us know that the provisional ballots will start being counted on this Saturday by the Board of Elections. And they are on track to meet the deadline to certify the election by November 20. And as you said, if anyone wants, as, you know, these results are being updated every day, you can.
So the final date is November 20 is the certification date? Okay, somebody had asked me and I couldn't remember. Okay, great. Thanks.
Yes. And for updated election results, people can go to bergencountyclerk.org, as the mayor had mentioned.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ron, would you like to give a report? Ron Kissner?
Just real quick, Mayor, two people. Michelle, thanks to all of us for doing the election. It could not have been done without Michelle. She's just.
Absolutely.
She never ceases to amaze me. I think you and all the council members are aware of it. Just above and beyond, again, her efforts are never.
Hey, Ron. As you were giving her the praise that she is 100% due, she has her mask over her face.
Exactly. I'm used to it. But really, I just, you know, she's an amazing asset to the community. And the other one I want to thank is John Gill. You guys mentioned the November newsletter. Newsletter was terrific when you guys got started. My personal opinion, I think it's even improved if it could have been done and John has stepped up and done a great job with it. His communication, as Councilwoman Holman said, regards to the, you know, hydrant flushing, he's really stepped up. And when we found out, even with the health department secretary position, it wasn't, he heard about it. I'll do it, Ron. And it just, it's that kind of. that kind of team effort with all the borough employees, we really have built a nice team, and it's just a pleasure to work with all of them, but John and Michelle just really should be recognized for their outstanding work, and, you know, just always willing to step up. That's it for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Ron, and, and agreed 100%. Liz, anything to add? Great, okay, thank you so much. Open the meeting to the public, the last time before we close the meeting, anyone wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone, I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved, Holman.
Thank you, Liz, second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone, that concludes our meeting.
Thanks, people. Bye, everybody.